Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this week, we've got an update on the recycling program and Studley's Pond and the town credit rating report. Now here's the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance? Mr. Ryan, would you like to lead us?
I'd like to lead.
Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion, as are other recently-recorded meeting and community events. Please go to wrps.com for further information. I just want to make a note that Mr. L. Loughlin is running late tonight. He's at a concert at the Memorial Park School. He'll be joining us as the meeting progresses. Under community announcements, I want to start the meeting first with a little piece of paper that I had wrote up. What I basically want to say is, the Board of Selectmen is comprised of five elected volunteers. Our duties include establishing an agenda and direction for our town to follow, overseeing and governing of town business and services, resolving residents' concerns, whether that's as challenges as removing a few boards from a dam, or simply convincing a cellular company to find an alternative tower site. We're not compensated for our time. We all serve at the will of you, the people, and for the love we have for our community as do many other selfless volunteers throughout our town. We have many hard-working employees who provide various services 24/7 on behalf of our residents, whether that be police, fire, school, water, trash, highway, parks, library, our youth commission, our senior center, and of course, all the support and administrative staff, just to name a few. The recent events as reported in numerous news media outlets are not fair. They do not depict the town we grew up in, the town we made good friends in, the town we are raising our families in, the town we love, and they certainly do not reflect the sentiment of this board. Inappropriate behavior, regardless of within a professional relationship or personal relationship, is unacceptable. Unfortunately, rumors spread, gossip ensued, and social media raised its ugly head with unlimited character assassinations and innuendos. This board acted swiftly and decisively. That action included seeking a remedy that would be the least disruptive for our town. Due in part to the media coverage, as a board, we quickly realized the situation became much bigger than any of us had ever accounted. We voted to launch an investigation by an independent firm, which is now underway. We ask that everyone please refrain from further comment and causeur until the facts are all revealed. We will then take the appropriate action as deemed necessary. We will not be publicly discussing or commenting in order to respect the rights of the parties involved and then allow the investigation to move forward. And I want to thank everybody for their cooperation. And now, we'll get back to our weekly agenda. Thank you. Under community announcements, we have the Rockland Days next Saturday, June 16th, 1 to 4. Is Mr. Lucas here tonight to tell us a little bit about it?
Just a couple of very quick notes on it. As the Mr. Chairman just noted, it is Saturday, June 16th, at 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the Laurel Memorial Field. We have approximately 70 vendors that are coming for various products that they sell or interest in for you people. We have, I believe it's 11 food trucks, so there will be a food court there. We have activities for the kids. We have an obstacle course. We have pony rides. There's all kinds of games going to be there. We have live entertainment. David Oliver will be there. Jim Armstrong is there. Critical Edge will be there, as well as the Defenders Concert Group. It should be a great time, a lot of fun. If the weather holds out, it'll be even more fun. And it is rain or shine, so that I think it'll be a good time for anyone to come down and enjoy a lot of the outfits of the town. Any questions?
Questions from the board? This will be our second one, right?
This will be the second one, yes. And it's probably half, twice the size of last year. So that it's grown, and it'll probably grow every year. We're planning on having it yearly.
John, I just want to say a thank you to your entire group. You know, you are representative, I think, of about 20 people who have been working for the past, oh, more than, I think, since last October on this, I believe, was when you started.
There's roughly 20 people in the group. And they've all worked hard, and I think you'll all see some real nice results from it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Look forward to it. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have minutes, open session minutes of May 15, 2018.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? That's four. We are missing Mr. L. Loughlin still. Next up, we have open session minutes of May 22nd, 2018.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? We have three with one abstention. We have executive session minutes of May 15, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Not to be released until all matters are settled. All those in favor? That's unanimous vote, four. Thank you. Next up, we have executive session minutes of May 22nd, 2018.
Motion to approve. All matters to be released until all matters are settled.
Second.
All those in favor? And that's three with one abstention.
Abstention.
Thank you. Okay, on the agenda items tonight, we have a discussion about appointment for interim town administrator. I'm gonna hold that until Mr. L. Loughlin is able to join us tonight. So we're gonna move into item number four, the ISO report for the building inspector. Mr. Rubel available?
The designs by Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, so we have to relieve each other because we are open on Tuesday nights for the business of the residents. So we'll move on to item number five, the cornhole tournament road closure request. Marcy?
So, our highway supervisor, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong agenda.
Item number five.
This is a request to have a road closure for a cornhole tournament as long as the police department approves.
This is a, oh, I think a yearly event.
Yes, it is.
So, chief, oh, excuse me.
It's an annual event. It's just at the corner of Everett and Sandy Street. We have no trouble with it.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Let's see, four vote again. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item number six while we're still waiting Mr. Rubel's arrival. Item number six is Boy Scout Troop 57. Is, oh, is he here?
Here he is.
Okay, I stand corrected. We're gonna revert back to item number four. We have the ISO report from our building inspector, Mr. Tom Rubel.
Hi, thank you. Is anybody familiar with the ISO and what they do?
No.
Okay. What they do is they follow the procedures in the building departments as far as issuing permits, inspections, inspectors, the certifications of the inspectors. In 2007, when I came aboard, we were 5-5. The lower the number, the better, 1 to 10. We were 5-5. The best you can do is 4-4. Because the state, the Commonwealth, what they had done is they adopted the international code, but they're always three years behind. We get penalized for that. We get penalized because the other inspectors don't have to be internationally certified, just a building commissioner. We get penalized for that. 2012, we did 5-4. And 2018, bingo, we did 4-4. So we did a great job. We got a lot of help down there. I'd like to thank the three Ms., which is Marcy, Michelle, and Megan. They fill in on dead time. John has over 40 hours of research on this report. He did a great job. Can't do it without them. There was a lot of help down there. They have a good family down there. And if you need to know anything else, I don't know if you got the report. The report was in color, but I think you got them black and white.
Yes.
And I'm sorry for that. With blue. You can see, it's the army board, with blue here. With blue, you can look at the country average, state average, and then we hit national average. There was a lot of work put in this, with blue. The only thing we did get credit on was plan review. The plan review is usually on a big city, Boston, Quincy, where they have a plan, a planner, that looks over the plans. We don't need that here. We're a small municipality. The schools, when we did the schools, I called in a third party, and they found about four inches of a three-ring binder that was not to code. And they looked at that, and they know that we got, you know, if we need a plan review, we got one. Bob Current, I'll call him. He calls me, Owen Whitman, so we get things to work on. But we did a good job down there. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Are they getting a color copy?
I can probably, if you need these, I can probably do them on my copy. If you want me to do four or five copies, if you need a copy, color, I'll give you this one. Whatever.
I'm good.
Okay.
I don't know about the rest of the board, if they need to see color.
I'll set two, but thank you.
No. We've got a good family down there.
Thank you.
All set?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving back to item number six, Boy Scout Troop 57 Yard Seal at Town Hall Plaza. Marcy?
This is a young man who would like to have a yard sale on Front Plaza, July 14th and 15th, for which he's seeking approval for his Eagle Scout project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I get to go through an awful lot of Eagles functions over the course of the year, and it never ceases to amaze me how many Eagle Scouts of the Rockland people tune out the Rockland scouting program, so congratulations to them all.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. That's unanimous vote, Marcy. Thank you. Four. Okay, item number seven, we have Class 1 license for the new automobile dealership, Prime Volvo Social at 1030 Hingham Street. And I want to add that I checked, we're both planted in Zona to make sure that everything was in compliance. And this will be the initial issue of the license for Class 1, which is a auto dealer's license.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
I believe we have the applicant here.
Oh, they want to come up and speak?
If they'd like.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't need to speak.
No, come on up.
You just gotta prove.
Come on up and introduce yourselves so the people know who you are and that you're a Rockland person.
My, my name is Shaga Russell. I'm counsel for Prime Automotive Group.
Yeah, come on up and speak.
Up here?
Sure.
Sure. My name is Shaga Russell. I'm counsel for Prime Automotive Group. And, and yes, we've, you know, we've applied for a Class 1 license for the Volvo dealership next to our existing Hyundai dealership. And so that's why we're here.
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you for investing in Rockland and for being here in such a present.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And good luck with your endeavors.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, I hear.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight, recycle program update. Is Janice McCarthy a health agent back there? And I might also add that there was an article that touched base on Rockland in the Globe yesterday about recycling.
Yeah, they quoted me, and I didn't even have to talk to them. As many of you may be aware of, the recycling industry is taking a huge downward spiral since January 1st, when China closed its international markets for importing of recycling. We have seen a drastic increase in our processing rates. In May of 2017, we were paying $2.96 a ton to process our recycling. In April of 2018, we're paying $67.18. Part of the problem is the contamination in the recycling stream. Biggest thing, plastic bags. Through a partnership with Social Recycling Cooperative, within the next couple of weeks, we are going to have a recycling enforcement compliance officer who's going to start the two, we've worked with the public to determine the two messiest recycling routes. And they're going to be going out prior to the trucks hitting the streets and checking recycling bins. It's a messy job. Any bins, for the first couple of weeks, any bins that have contamination in them, they're gonna be tagged, but they will still be serviced. They'll keep a list of those property addresses, and Julie Sullivan, who is the compliance officer, will compile the list, present it to my office. She'll keep a copy. After a couple of times, they will start tagging the bins again, turning them, so the driver knows that they can't be serviced. And once they can get the, and they'll know what is in there that's not supposed to be in there. Once they remove that, the next time their recycling service is due, they'll be serviced. We're hoping that this will help reduce the costs involved. We'll see what happens.
Any questions from the board?
Can I just ask one?
Sure.
Long-term, Janice, like, will this affect rate? I mean, is it too early to?
As of right now, we don't foresee any change in the rates. The state has allowed us at this point, we've got grant money available. Once the rate went over $49 a ton, we can use that grant money for the difference.
Okay.
So, I think, you know, when I did my budgeting for FY '19, I took into consideration what, you know, we were looking at as far as pricing was concerned. So I think we should be okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other literature? Because we're single-stream recycling, but just because we're single-streamed don't mean everything should go in there.
Right, exactly. And new, well, we do send out mailers every Ju, they should be going out next week or the week after as part of our contract informational, your calendars, what's allowable and what's not, what should not be in there.
Well, I know that other communities are facing the same challenges. And in fact, some of them are paying up to $100 a ton, I believe the article stated, depending upon where they were and where they were shipping their recyclables to.
Exactly.
And they're actually stockpiling it as well.
Right.
Because the market isn't there right now.
There's no market at all right now for glass. And I know that the state is trying to fast-track to reopen some of the plants that closed down, because it was cheaper for us to ship it off to China than it was to process it here. So.
Any questions? You said, any questions?
Are there any other major things besides plastic bags? I know I get tagged for a pizza box.
Yes, contaminated cardboard. If it's contaminated with any type of food waste, it's not recyclable.
What is the biggest offender?
Plastic bags.
Plastic bags?
Yeah, it's between, a lot of people will put their recycling in like a plastic trash bag and then put it in the bin. All your recycling should just go in there loose. If you've got shredded paper, we ask that you put it in a paper bag. And any shopping, plastic shopping bags, those can always go back to like Stop &amp; Shop and Target and those places. They do have containers or receptacles for all plastic bags. But that's the big one.
I was gonna say, even if we implemented a policy for no plastic bags, we don't have a grocery store in town, no really.
There's not, yeah.
Other, we'll say, larger retail outlets that would actually, you know, be a contributor to that, so it doesn't make sense for us to do that yet.
No.
Any other questions from the board?
No, thank you for this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, item number nine, Studley Pond Dam update. Our highway supervisor Dave Taylor unfortunately can't be here because he's actually the coach of the high school lacrosse team who's in a playoff game tonight. Marcy, I know Dave was kind enough to give us a report. If you would be kind enough to.
Yes, we have a written report from Highway Superintendent David Taylor that Mastaw and DCR Dam Safety came out to remove the board, the first boards, on May 22nd. They monitored the downstream flow, which produced load issues to the area, so they returned on Tuesday, May 29th, and safely removed the second board, which was also a four-inch board. They again monitored the flow, the stream flow was safe, so they produced no harm to the surrounding area, and they returned one final time on Thursday, May 31st, and safely returned to assess the dam. And they now believe that the boards have been removed satisfactorily, and the highway department was there to observe as they visited the dam each time. And as the board knows, this has been an ongoing issue in town, so it's very exciting to see this resolved.
Now, we actually got beachfront now over there. So, it's actually good to see that the state actually followed through. And I know it was a difficult task for everybody involved, but I'm glad to see that we see it to an end.
And we have already had a few positive comments from the neighborhood that they're pleased with the result and thankful to the board and the state and the highway department for their work.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
A few residents reached out to me. Their swamp's finally turned off, because the groundwater was finally low enough, so it had some initial impact, which was great.
Great news.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have item number 10, town credit rating report from our town council. Mr. Hart?
Good evening. I just, I wanted to kind of reiterate from the last meeting as well that on May 2050, we'd sold a bond, and it was purchased by Fideli Capital Market, which is extremely impressive for a town of our size. It was an $11 million bond. We had a $1.3 million premium on it, which makes the effective rate of this 2.85%, which is a really fantastic rate for any of the towns. With that, we got rerated by Standard and Poor, and we went from a AA- to a AA, and that's second from the very top rating. When I came here, we were a triple B rating, and we've had two increases since then. And this is something that's, that I'm rather proud of for all the teamwork that we've got from all the departments, the financial departments in town working together, and the finance committee as well, in setting different policies, reserves. We do have some work to do. If you take a look at, there's another more detailed Ratings Direct that has some information on some of the improvements that we can still make. We've got some policies on debt that we can improve on, that I'd like to talk about at a future date with you, as well as the finance committee, and a couple other items that are not as large as that, but that seems to be one of the larger ones. They're, they have some concern over the OPEB debt that we have, but we've already spoken about what our plan is on that. They would like to see it addressed quicker all the way around the state, but nobody seems to really be addressing this on a local basis with, except for a few handful of towns in the Commonwealth. As you know, we're gonna address it once our retirement is no longer paying for the accumulation of the debt that we had previously in that, which is about $2 million a year. And once that's paid off, we'll get a chance to put it towards the OPEB debt that we have. This is, I don't believe that, that I've seen any other towns that have reached a triple A rating that I'm aware of. Even the state itself is at a double A rating, which we've now matched. We used to piggyback on top of them for our bonds. We no longer have to do that. And that's it.
So that's great news, then. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we'll do the Water Commission resignation. Marcy, if you would?
So, we've had a resignation from Water Commissioner William Cormier, and we accept that with regret and thank Mr. Cormier for his service and wish him all the best. And we are currently working with Town Clerk Shortle to just, to figure out what the process is to either elect or appoint a new commissioner until the April elections. So, Ms. Shortle will have a report for you within the next week or so about the process.
Yes, I think the next upcoming election is the primary in September, correct?
And I don't know how to answer that for you, Mr. Chairman. Donna, are you still in the room?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to speak to this issue for appointing a new water commissioner?
We would have to, we would have to ask the state for approval to put it on the state ballot, to have it done at the same time. We're looking into whether you can appoint a temporary until the next election. And I don't have an answer for that yet.
So that would be at the early of September if they were to approve, right? Unless we did a special, which would be costly.
It actually, what I have read says that you have to do a special.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
May I please note, though, that I do not have a signed resignation from him.
Yes.
Yet, we don't.
We have an email resignation, but we feel we should have a signed.
Mr. Clifford, is email adequate?
We should get a signed resignation.
Okay, so.
And we have.
I have contacted him, but he does not respond.
Okay. We could notify the water commissioners, the remaining water commissioners on that board, you know, so that they can possibly get in touch with them as well.
Okay.
That would be appreciated. Thank you. Well, we might as well get into the next item, and then we'll circle back and take care of the interim town manager issue. But item number 12, we've started to, a process back on May 15th for some payroll procedures. I'm gonna ask that we motion to table this tonight because it's come to our attention that both departments are gonna be having some personnel changes in the very near future. And I think it'd be prudent to allow those departments to have their new employees acclimated, and then we go back and we do a revisit to this item, because the employees that we 've been dealing with, some of them are leaving to take a different position, and some are actually getting promoted to another position. So it doesn't make sense, you know, at this late in the game, to try to reinvent the wheel. So I would ask that the board would entertain a motion to table.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? I'd like to be heard on this, please. So it's all set, it's tabled. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, back to item number one, sorry, item number three, discussion of an appointment of an interim town administrator. Mr. Clifford, would you mind giving the board just a quick overview of why we're here?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. The charter actually includes a provision that in the absence of a town administrator, the board has the ability to appoint an interim. There are a number of different options available. You could appoint someone to do it on a part-time basis. There are a number of retired town administrators, town managers who do serve in that capacity. Or you could pick someone else who's familiar with the community and ask them to, to serve in that capacity. We don't have any indication at this point how long the absence is gonna take place. Obviously, the investigation is ongoing, but clearly the work is, the work of the town has to go on, so someone should serve in that capacity, even on a temporary basis.
What I would like to say to the residents out there, that the Board of Selectmen actually has a very good staff working for them. We have Marcy Birmingham, we have Stacy Callenham, and we have Sue White to work underneath us. And for the majority of the work that gets done, it usually flows through those three individuals. And I know that the town administrator typically would oversee that, but I gotta be really honest, and I think that the women in our office actually do a brunt of the work. I mean, they actually do all the stuff behind the scenes. And as, as my wife will say, behind any, any strong, strong man's usually a stronger woman, so. And I use that in the sense that we've relied heavily in the last few weeks, in the absence of our town administrator, on Marcy Birmingham, Sue White, and Stacy Callenham to step up and fill those roles. In the meantime, I've had a couple different individuals approach me from the community. One was our former town administrator, Kevin Donovan, who's done a stint recently in Kingston that ran into a similar issue. And I had talked to Kevin at length, and from what he tells me, it's, the talent pool out there is very limited right now, based on what's happening. But there seems to be a lot of towns that are in flux right now, so the pool is very limited. Another individual who offered to step up and give us a hand was a former fire chief, Kevin Henderson. Kevin Henderson currently serves as our town moderator. As well, our current police chief, John Lawellin, has also offered to step up and assist the town on a short-term basis. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Marcy Birmingham as well has offered and has been doing a large part of that work right now. So we have multiple choices that are willing to step up and help the town out in the short term till we can determine what course of action and where we're gonna land. And regardless of how, you know, we end up going about this tonight, I think that it has to be noted that, you know, we have a strong staff in place in town hall. The work is continued regardless of the departments. And although we have an incident that none of us have ever encountered before, it's something that the town will get through, and we can assure you that we're all trying to take the most positive steps to ensure that the investigation is thorough and factual that the investigation is thorough and factual as possible. But in the meantime, as Mr. Clifford mentioned, the business of the town still has to go on. So we owe it to the taxpayers, we owe it to ourselves that we have somebody fill that role in the interim. So I'd like to open up the discussion to the board and hear what some of their thoughts are. Mr. LaFleur?
I think, you know, how you did, we were kicking around was, you know, Marcy Birmingham, for the most part, has been filling that role for the last couple of weeks, and I'd like to see Marcy continue to do that. But at the same time, Marcy is working on a lot of other projects. So whereas we're not filling that role, I think it might be an idea if we go with a co-town administrator at this time, and that would be Marcy Birmingham and John Lawellin, take that position. So when Marcy has to peel away to do her other stuff, there's continuity in the office.
Anybody else have any comments or suggestions or?
I have a few thoughts. I mean, oh, Mr. Chairman, I echo your thoughts about the people and the caliber of people and the credibility of the people who have stepped forward. Oh, you know, each of those, like four people who we're considering right now are good, decent people with a lot of experience and have a lot of service and credible service to this town. Oh, I mean, I just, when I read in the papers, oh, Mr. Donovan's recent experience in Kingston, he really helped, oh, helped move that community forward. Oh, you know, Marcy Birmingham's just work, frankly, since she's been here and the grants and the work, the progress we've been able to make, like in the downtown development and so many things, is really a result of her. Oh, so that should be noted. Chief Lawellin, he's a, oh, a guy who's, oh, you know, who, like, was born in Ridge, Rockland, and has years of really dedicated service to our town, really bringing people together, you know, and, you know, he runs really a top-notch department with the men and women at the police. And then Chief Henderson as well, the same, you know, the same type of individual. I mean, his, his track record is, you know, like, almost second to none as well. The only thing, so I'm actually completely open, you know, on all this. The only thing I will say, I think whatever we do, we have to, it does have to be one person. That, you know, I think they're really, you know, there has to be an administrator. So there's, oh, so there is a, a structure here. So there is, oh, like, an organizational flow. Like, and that's just my opinion on this. With that, I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks. But I mean, if we do, oh, moving forward, like, I think there should be, oh, one interim town administrator. I think that organizational-wise, I think it just helps to, helps to streamline things, but that's just my thought. But interested in hearing what everyone else has to say.
Anybody else?
I would like to say, I would certainly would think that Marcy deserves a shot at the job if she wishes to do the job. I've spoke with her at length, and I think she feels capable of doing the job. I, again, I, I'm kind of against two masters, because it's hard for one person or anybody to listen to two people. I'm sure we can work it out if we did have John and Marcy there, but I just, you know, the logistics of it would have to be, you know, spelled out a little bit better for both of them, so that if we were going to go that route. And, you know, and I hate to bypass former Chief Henderson, who, again, is another guy who got his ear to the ground in Rockland and could be another, you know, a real good asset to the town. So, you know, if I, if I have to choose between one guy or the other, right, you know, whether, if I'm going to get a ticket or the house going to be burned down. You know what I mean? And, and, but they're both qualified. But then again, Marcy, again, is, is already doing the job, and, you know, I think I'd rather just let her give it a shot and then, and then see what I, you know, I understand the downsides might be long-term. You might want the job full-time, and, you know, it could hurt to be in the term. I don't know. I don't really know, but I just know that you've done a really good job in the things that you're doing. And if you, if she wants the job, I would give it to her first, but I will, again, defer it to the will of the board.
And I, I agree. I mean, I'm, I'm all for Marcy. I've had a couple of conversations with her where, you know, she has expressed that she does have a lot on her plate as well.
Yeah.
And I thought, you know, where is the chief volunteer to step up? That it might be, you know, advantageous to take him up on his offer to assist Marcy in whatever capacity within the office.
No, no, I, I.
That's my point. I mean, if we decide Marcy's town administrator interim, I'm 1 million percent behind that. And obviously, whoever's willing to step up in the town to help her out, or any of us out at this time.
It seems to me the last time that we needed one of these, I mean, town administrators interim, I called up John Rogers and said, John, I need a town administrator. And he goes, well, if you can't find anybody else, give me a call. I said, John, we'll see you about 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, meet you at the town, while we get this all squared away, okay? And that was the end of that. Showed up the next day and on we went. I don't even remember if we voted for it, quite frankly, so. Again, I'm not, I'll vote, you know, whatever the board would like, because.
From my vantage point, seeing more day-to-day in the last few weeks, I would advocate that Marcy is pretty much the assistant town administrator right now.
Correct.
I mean, we, her title doesn't say that, but basically, that's what her role is right now, is the assistant town administrator. And she's got a number of projects that are still underway, a lot of good projects that have been happening on Rockland that Marcy's actually been involved in. There's a grant that we just got awarded, and I'll let Marcy speak about that as well. But there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that don't happen by accident, because people like Marcy do hard work to make it happen. And on the other side of the coin, for me, speaking with the other candidates who had expressed an interest, I know that they have plenty of experience. I know that they're also well-versed in government. But part of, part of me, my gut feeling says that, and particularly in this particular situation, based on what we're going through as a town, and the first thing that came to my mind was Laura North. And what that means to me is the fact that if we had somebody, and when I thought of the police chief, I thought of the same parallels that Hannibal just recently went through, and their police chief filled the same role on a short-term basis. And the thought process behind it was to try to do it, I did speak to John briefly about it, and we talked about making it a part-time position so that Town Hall could still flourish. And I would even move to suggest that, I know we're going to be doing contract negotiations in exact session tonight, and one of those individuals is actually Marcy Birmingham. And I would even make, you know, advocate that we actually change her title to assistant town manager, and, I'm sorry, town administrator. I say manager because she does manage the people rather well. But, you know, my gut tells me that in this particular case, I want to make sure that we send the right messages to all residents. I want to recognize the fact that we have hard-working staff here in the building. It's no reflection of them that, you know, my opinion is that I actually think very highly of Marcy. And when she first come on, I can remember, we didn't know that Marcy was going to have the job, and I fought, I fought on town meeting floor to get that position. It was to actually go through and start to be a part-time position, to go through and help with our office, and then it became a full-time, and it's developed from there. And we've been very successful with grants and whatnot. And Marcy helps out down in the building to, from time to time. She also acts as the planning board secretary. And then we'd be looking at if Marcy was to fill that. I know that government-wise, it sounds crazy, but because she fills that role as planning board secretary, we would have to disconnect it from that and hire someone else to do that to make sure there's no crossover. And at the same time, we're going to be looking for in the future with our CPA, we're going to be looking for having a secretary for them, which would be funded out of CPA funds. So it might even be something we have to look to with the finance, you know, with finance to go through and look at. Do we have a secretary position that's going to take care of some of the boards in town, you know, a part-time position? And do we go through and actually make the move to have an assistant town administrator? Now, Abington has one, and actually, I was on the phone when we were, we had phoned Abington about an event that was coming up, and we actually talked to the person over there. Her name is Dory, and we had a very good conversation. And what went to the back of my mind right away was that Marcy does the same, pretty much the same thing that Dory does over there. So I would be willing to, for my, myself personally, I'm willing to advocate to have Marcy be the assistant. And much like you have any department, if you have a chief, you usually have a deputy. Someone fills in, and one's not here, the other's not here. I know we have a deputy police chief, and I would have a deputy fire chief, and when they take vacations, the chief usually appoints the deputies fill that role when they're gone. And I would, I would almost say that in this particular case, I know that Marcy's doing a lot of the work, but I must say that Stacy Callahan shares the load with her. I also got to say that Sue White in our office feels a lot of the calls and shares the load with her. And, you know, based on that, I'm thinking that personally, if we was to go through and have a part-time person, I mean, the fact that John Lawellin is already the police chief, it makes a natural fit because he can actually manage, he has the ability, because he's got a strong staff under him already. So I know the police station will be in good hands short-term while he's away. I also have a feeling that Town Hall will be in good hands, because not only is John the police chief, but John actually sat at this desk at one time. And so he understands that, that role as well. But again, I'm not opposed to sharing that role, sharing that duty. And what I would do is I'd actually defer to Marcy and John, who are both in the room, if that's who we're keyed in on, to see if that would be something they would be amenable to, or if it's something that, you know, maybe one needs to, you know, one needs to take the role, the lead role, and one can be the assistant. I don't have a problem either way. But again, I want to advocate that I believe Marcy's already fulfilling the role of an assistant, and I think that she needs to be, we need to change her job title to reflect that. So, anybody else can weigh in on it?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out for the board that you're under some pressure to make a decision tonight, but this will not be a long-term decision that you're committing yourself to. I think it will be, by necessity, it's going to be open-ended. The board can revisit it as later, as soon as you like. So you're not necessarily committing yourself to a long-term decision at this point. You know, you are under some pressure. I mean, one thing, you know, I'd like to add is that all of the board members have stepped up and had to put in a lot of extra time to try to fill in the gap as well. But I think there is, obviously, you're feeling some pressure to put somebody in a position tonight, but it's not something that you're necessarily long-term committed to.
I mean, I'd be even willing to see if we, if we, even if we did it on a trial basis to the end of, end of the month, to get us through the fiscal year to see how it would work out. I mean, any comments, John?
Chief?
I'd be happy to comment if you want.
When, when all this took place, you know, clearly, we knew that there were going to be some immediate changes and some issues that were going to have to be addressed right away. When I offered my services to come up here, it certainly wasn't to come in and take anybody else's position or prevent, you know, upward motion at some point down the road. The services that I'm offering to the board and to Town Hall are really very simple. I believe completely in putting the round peg in the round hole, the square peg in the square hole. And I think I've done that successfully at the police department, so much so that I can actually afford to offer my time up here and to help out up here. I have no desire, nor am I capable of coming up here and doing the work that Marcy does, or Sue, or Stacy, or any of the other department heads up here. What the service I think that I can offer is to come up, have somewhat of a calming influence, bring some normalcy back to the Town Hall, help with people. There's going to be an investigation ongoing. I think I can add some legitimacy to that and help in any way possible there. Work with communication skills with the board, because I think at my department, one of the number-one things is to be able to communicate back and forth. So, listen, I'm not here to compete with Marcy for this job in any way whatsoever. I will agree that I'm not so sure the co-thing is a great idea. I'll come up here and assist in any way, shape, and form that I can. But, you know, I've got a lot going on also, so I offer that to you in an attempt to help settle the dust, end all of the, shall we say, rumors, innuendos, backstabbing, all the other stuff that's going on. That's what I do for a living. I try to put an end to those sort of things. So I offer that as a service to you guys to come up and help out. Whatever you decide, I'm good with either way, I promise you, so.
So I'll make a motion. Marcy Birmingham as the interim town administrator. Do we want to talk anymore? Marcy, do you want to comment about how?
I'm happy to comment if you'd like to. I don't have a microphone, so.
Sure, absolutely.
I echo what Chief Lawellin says. From the beginning, this has been a difficult situation, and you do have good staff, and the team that you've put together has come together to support the Town Hall through a rough couple of weeks that we've had. I in no way ever set out to compete for the town administrator's interim position. I don't think being the town administrator was really on my radar. I do work closely with the Board of Selectmen on a number of projects already, which if you placed me in this role, I would be working on my regular projects and shepherding the Town Hall at the same time. I think Chief Lawellin makes a lot of good points. He brings a lot of experience, and he would lend a calming influence to the Town Hall. I hate to put it back on you all. I do think I can do the job. We're already doing the job. I would say that I can't take full credit for that. It's as a team with other great department heads here. I do think I can do the work, but I, I have to put it back on the board and say what I've said from the beginning to each of you is that I live in this town, I work in this town, and I care a great deal about the town. So I want you to make the decision that you all feel is best for the town going forward right now.
I thank you for that, Marcy. And I know we've had a lengthy discussion as well. And as I said before earlier, my gut was the calming influence that Chief Lawellin could offer to the board, to the town at this moment in time. And that's no reflection by any means of what you, what you're doing or currently doing for this board and will continue to do.
And for the record, I've never felt like it was a reflection of the things that we work on. We've always worked well together, and I appreciate all of you and your support. I also have a lot of respect for Chief Lawellin. So I certainly understand any decision that the board decides to make.
Well, any other discussion?
The only discussion I would have is that we're going to go in and discuss Ms. Birmingham's contract that she ought to have the title going in that we want to give her. And I would say that if we're negotiating a contract, we would have to negotiate a assistant town administrator versus the planner, whatever you have on there. So I would make a motion that we would change her job title before we go out and talk to her, and then we can decide whether or not we'll add the chief for the, for the, to be the at-town administrator, and she'd be the assistant.
Any other discussion? Any other? Mr. Hart?
I'd like to comment on it. And I could work with any of those lines that are in the room, quite frankly. I think they're all excellent for the position. The only point I'd like to make is I've been working with Marcy for quite some time at Town Hall, and no one in this room is more familiar with what's going on in that front office than Marcy is. And she's been being groomed for this position for quite some time, and is fully capable of it in my eyes. That's all I can say.
And to your point, I think we've all recognized the fact that we have very good staff in Town Hall. And again, I, something in my gut tells me, and it's no reflection on Marcy, that I personally, I think I need to go a different route. And my route for me is, is again, I want to make sure that Town Hall is common. I want to make sure that Marcy has an opportunity to flourish here. I want to make sure she has an opportunity to grow. And at the same time, I don't know what's going to happen with the administrative job in the future, the town administrator job. But I would like to see Marcy apply for that in the future, because I think she is filling a large role here. But at the same time, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of things happening by the mere fact that I've been spending a little bit more time at Town Hall. And I can tell you that some of the things I see here, and it's no fault of the people who work in the building, but I think that we have a culture here that needs to be addressed. I think we need to change it. And I think we need to look at, you know, this is an opportunity for the town, actually have a reset, actually go through and, and advance things that are happening here for all the staff, all the people in this building, as well as other department heads. We've been, you know, I can't not recognize the fact that the town has come strides, has come in the last 10 years. Okay, we've done great things, and that's with the support of the community. That's been what the support of the department is. That's been the support of everybody working well together. And it's also been by the support of the boards recognizing that, excuse me, and actually going through and making sure that things are in place so that people can strive. We've done a lot of good things in this community. There's still a lot of good things happening. And I think when I had opened my statement, I don't want people to lose sight of the fact that we have good things happening. don't want people to lose sight of the fact that we have good things happening in town. They're going to continue to be good, regardless of whatever circumstances arise. I think that tells us a lot about the town, how we actually react and change things in town from where we are. I mean, that's a big part of it. There's a lot of people in this room that I'm looking at. A lot of these people are on boards. A lot of them are members, employees of the town, and everyone is really concerned about where we're going here. And to Mr. Clifford's point, we... Our timetable is, you know, we don't know what our timetable is going to be. Right now, if this is a short-term solution, I think. I mean, the long-term solution, we're not there yet. We're really not. I do know that we've expressed, you know, as a board, we've expressed that we want to go through and ensure that, you know, the women who actually work under the Board of Selectmen's office are given a contract, and a contract that we can maximize for up to three years. And we want to send that message back to a lot of the people in town, that we actually support them and we actually understand what they do. I mean, and that's why we're going to be meeting later tonight about their contracts. And unfortunately, you know, in hindsight, when you go back and look at some of the things that may have done in the past, whether they go to bad, I mean, one of the things that sticks out in my mind is that, you know, the person we're looking to fill in for right now wasn't very good at sharing the credit with the people who actually did the work. And some of that goes back to the woman who work in our office. They do a lot of work. And I know we've been instrumental in going through, sharing all the things with department heads and all that stuff. But we also have very good employees in Town Hall. We have good employees at the water department, the sewer department, the highway department, all those places. And, I mean, even your department, Eric. I mean, you're faced with a person who's going to be moving on. You're going to need to fill that role. And we recognize that we have good employees in town, and we want to make sure that we provide an environment for them to flourish and actually provide that for the town. So I think it goes without saying that a lot of the people in Town Hall have stepped up, you know, in this, we'll call it, crisis that we've all experienced. But I think we're over the hump now. And I think tonight, if we can actually move to get an interim person in, we can get, restore some comedy back to Town Hall, and then we can continue with the business of Town Hall and get back to what we really do best, and that's provide services for the community. I mean, we're doing a lot of good things for the community. And there's a lot of volunteers, and we need to get more volunteers. So we have to send a message. We need volunteers. I think at Town Meeting, that was my overwhelming message. I thanked the people who came to Town Meeting, but I also made mention that we need to have more volunteers in town. And when we get into Selectmen's comments, I'll touch base about the fact that some of us are uncompensated, and the fact that, you know, a lot of committee members do it, you know, because they love the town. But unfortunately, the town is becoming much like a business, and we might have to start looking at, you know, supplementing some of those people so we can make sure we get people to come out. And I know that's not a lot what the residents want to hear, but it's difficult to have people have the time. And you don't realize how much time it actually takes being a volunteer until you actually have to spend the time doing it. And I think, I mean, that's been evident by all of us on this board this past few weeks. So... And again, I mean, that's my gut feeling, but we're a board. I'm one of five, so I don't know, you know, where we want to go here.
What would you like to do?
I personally would like to motion, make a motion that we appoint John Llewellyn as the interim, and with the understanding that, based on our contract negotiations, that Marcy Birmingham will be an assistant administrator, and we move forward with the town in that direction for the short-term as the interim, but as long-term, Marcy would be the assistant administrator.
Second.
And all those in favor? Or any other discussion?
All those in favor?
Anybody else? So... Thank you. Okay, now moving up into the next item. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen. None of the opinions and comments of only the individual member. With that, Mr. Loughlin?
No comments tonight.
Okay, Mr. Mullen?
I don't have any comments either. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
I'm commentless myself.
Okay. Ms. Hall?
Sure. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the board. This is my first meeting back since a few executive sessions, and I want to thank the board for welcoming me back. And I want to thank the people here tonight for keeping good decorum. I know that it's been kind of a trying time, and I really appreciate everybody kind of maintaining good decorum in the room today. But I want to make a statement tonight, but I just want everyone to know, it's pretty well-known now that I recently reported an incident of inappropriate behavior by the town administrator. And since the weeks that those allegations have emerged, it's been very challenging for me and my family. False rumors and gossip have spread, particularly on social media, about me, about the devotion to my spouse, my husband, Chris, and our children, and our town. Indeed, I no longer feel that my children, my son, is comfortable taking the bus, and I feel that my kids oftentimes are not safe or comfortable participating in some community activities. And this is a deeply disappointing consequence of my decision to stand up for myself in a situation where I believe that I was treated improperly. But I want people to know that I remain steadfastly committed to our community, and I fully support this board's decision to engage an independent investigator to investigate the allegations surrounding this incident. I have full confidence in this process, and I will cooperate fully. While my family and I take care of our health and our safety, my colleagues on this board, who dedicate their time and energy, have to focus on our local governance. So to this end, I'm going to take a brief voluntary leave of absence from the board, effective tomorrow, June 6, 2018, extending through the end of this investigation. And once completed, I intend to return to my position here as vice chair on the Rockland Board of Selectmen. In the interim, because this is a difficult and stressful time for all the parties involved in this investigation, I ask that you kindly respect the privacy of all people that are involved in this matter. And finally, I want to thank my husband and my children, my friends and my family and my neighbors and the residents who have reached out to support me during this difficult time. I look forward to returning at the conclusion of the investigation, and in my absence, I have full faith in the dedication and commitment of the members of this board to continue to represent the interests and improve the lives of our residents as they always have. So I thank you for your time and listening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I would only add that when I had opened up the initial statement about the volunteers, I was all volunteers. I know when Larry first started way back when, he's the elder statesman here to my left, I think they got a stipend or they got something.
He's getting a thousand dollars a year. It doesn't pay for anything. It just, you know, makes you think you're getting something. It actually got me six years in my retirement, so I really can't complain. But it's like anything, if you really want good help, then you got to offer some sort of financial incentive to bring out people that have really something to offer, not just besides an axe to grind. There's plenty of those people around who would love to, you know, just to get in to say, you know, what their problem is and stuff like that. But we don't need that anymore. What we need is hard-working, honest people that want to get out here and become part of this town and to move it forward. You know, we get a pretty good blend of age groups throughout the town. The kids suffer a little bit these days because of population trends and everything else, but there's a lot of good people in town. We've got a lot of good things to do, so...
I mean, it's something that I've been... I know when I was involved in youth football at one time, we were having a hard time getting volunteers. So we had opted to go through and raise the registration fees so we could actually pay for people to come out and provide the services, you know, that the volunteers normally did. And I'm not suggesting that for the board or any other boards, but I want to make it... To recognize the fact that we're having a difficult time to get volunteers throughout town. And these committees have taken on a new life. They're actually more like part-time jobs. I know that I speak numerous times, you know, fielding calls from townspeople who ask questions. I call into Town Hall to make sure that, you know, if somebody needed an email address or someone needed to send something or something happened, we can actually follow through. And it takes a lot of time. I'm not advocating to be paid for myself. I mean, my term is up in April, but I'm advocating for the fact that if we're going to attract candidates in the future to the board, I think that we have to actually consider as a town, as a board, and, you know, even finance, that we start looking at that. I know neighboring communities, they pay some of their volunteer committee members, you know, to serve. And I think it helps to bring out, my opinion, it helps to bring out people who can actually make the commitment, because essentially, we have volunteers helping to administer and do the daily job in the town. And not that we don't have a great board, and not that we don't have great volunteers in town, but we also have to look at how this can continue in the future and how we can sustain ourselves. And we need to get into the future that way, in my opinion. And again, I'm not advocating for myself. I'm advocating for the future and future boards, because at some point, you know, people have to choose between whether they spend time with their family or they actually have to do the business that they were elected to do and chose to do. And sometimes it makes it a little bit easier if they know they're going to get something that they can actually help take care of their family with while they're not there. So it's a trade-off. I know myself, I've been, this is my ninth year on the board, and I've donated, when I say donate, I don't mean to say donated, but I've given a lot of time to this town because I grew up here and I love the town, and I love doing what I do. So for me, I do it for nothing, but I know that talking to some other members and talking to other people in town, they don't have that, they don't have that same ability, because they need to choose if they have to work at night, or if they have to make a choice that they have to work a sad day, or they have to do something, and they need to do that. And with all the events that have been happening in town, I mean, we seem to be seeing each other at multiple committee meetings, which is a good thing. But the bad side to that is, you know, it's become almost a job for us versus the aspect of just volunteering and coming in and doing some things on a part-time basis. So it's something that we should consider in the future, and I'm only trying to plant the seed now, because I think that, you know, if you want to attract candidates, and you want to attract people who want to take the town's business seriously, that we may need to start actually compensating them, whether it's some sort of stipend or something. I don't know what that may be. That's for other boards to determine, but I think that we actually have to, as a community, we're going to really start to recognize the fact that it's challenging, because time is limited, and time is the most precious commodity for all of us. So I know everyone's time is valuable. So without that, I think I'm done talking then, because time is valuable. And I would make a motion that we... I would entertain a motion for executive session to discuss strategy with respect to contracts for non-union personnel.
So moved.
Discussion on assistant town accountant position, and we hope to reconvene in open session. I know that's not what you want to hear, Mr. Dave, but if things start to take too much time, we'll let you know so you can... We'll take a short TV break, but... So do we have a second?
So moved, yeah. Second.
And it's roll call. Mr. Loughlin?
Yep.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. That concludes this portion of the open session, and we are going into executive session. Thank you.